Warm Coke. Warm Coke. No ice. Watered down.
It is six.
It is six.
Just turned six.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for March 15th, 2022. It is six o'clock. We're going to begin this meeting like we do each of our meetings with the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to ask that Police Chief Don Bandy lead us in our prayer this evening and that Councilman Fan lead us in the pledge. If you would stand with me, please.
Let us pray. Kind most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the blessings you give us this day, this beautiful day for us to be here. The council, the mayor, the city employees that are here, our citizens that are here to be a part of this. Thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us, Lord. We ask that you will be with this body and give them the will and knowledge to do their job this day. In Jesus' name we beg it all. Amen.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I also would ask that everyone please remember the people of Ukraine in your prayers. I think that's appropriate in the coming days, so please do. With that, I'm going to ask Ms. Kettrell to call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilwoman Fan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hayes. Councilwoman Love.
Here.
Councilwoman Overton.
Here.
And Councilwoman Alexander is absent, but mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kettrell. Before you, you have the minutes from the March 1st, 2022 meeting. Have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Overton.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman George. Are there any additions, corrections? Ms. Love?
I have one thing, and it's on page four, and it's not like a typo or anything because she does a wonderful job on that now, but on the number five, when I made a motion for that, I moved to discuss and not to approve.
So with the minutes being amended to say that Ms. Love made the motion for purpose of discussion, any other corrections or additions requested? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes with that correction, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The minutes are approved. We're moving now to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that anyone that's here in the public may speak to any item that is on the evening's agenda. There's also a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to anything that's not on the agenda. You'll have five minutes. We ask that you give us your name and your address, and you will have your time to speak. So with that, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open, and whomever would like to speak may come forward.
Hello. My name is Grundy Dotson. I live at 613 Demoss. And number six, I don't really have anything to say. I was just trying to thank Councilman Alexander, David Brown, and Jimmy. I want to tell y'all thank you for coming to our meeting yesterday, and I hope it's not your last.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hey. Good afternoon, almost evening. My name is John Boone, and I live at 1137 Woodvale Drive, and I want to speak on item six through 11, actually. I know I only got five minutes, so first of all, I would say kudos on the decision to appropriate and allocate the $2 million to Clearview Park for improvements. It's been said that the devil's in the details. We all know that the devil is a master of confusion and deceit. He's a liar. He's a father of lies. So last week, or two weeks ago, we all kind of witnessed where full disclosure, in the case of Patterson Farms, not going forth to some people caused some confusion and some despair for some people. So in reference to where the residential adjacent property was commercial and prospective residents said they didn't know, they were never told. So sitting in these last council meetings, several council meetings, you know, I've seen ordinances like on the agenda tonight, there's several, like I said, six through 11 resolutions or so forth, things, and they read in very kind of abstract ways. I have no idea after I hear you read them over and someone motions to approve them, it's seconded, and it's passed on for the second reading to come or whatever. And I'm sure you all know, you've had discussions on them and know what they're about, but from a citizen's standpoint, you have no idea what they're about, and without knowing what they're about, there's no way to come forth either before the first reading, second reading, or whatever with any intelligent comment or commentary or concerns. So I just wonder if there is a way that those items can be explained a little more in detail. I don't know, other than just two lines. I'm sure there's more than just two lines for whatever is being passed. When it comes to Clearview Park, item number six, again, that $2 million will go a long way towards improvements that are needed in that community, and I believe that the citizens there and around that are concerned about the community have some ideas about what should go on and what should happen with that. So I would just, again, congratulate you all on sending that money forward, allocating it for the Clearview Park improvements, but I would also ask that, you know, you not move hastily and say, okay, well, this money is going to be for X, Y, Z without getting feedback from the community. There's been talk, when we had the meeting last night, there was a 60 by 80 building that was talked about. There was also another building that was talked about that apparently was discussed several years ago and never came before you all. For you to see it, and it's a lot more than $2 million, I'm sure, but it's something that would have been a value and will be a value add for the community if it is able to go forth, if we're able to raise additional funds to make it happen. You know, there are things in Gallatin that need to happen for the total health of the city, and that north Nashville, north Gallatin community is an area that can use some of the help. When it comes to total health, I'm talking about financial, physical, spiritual, mental, and there are things that can be done in all of those areas at a community center where you can put in programs where people can learn about financial responsibility, wealth building, investments, things like that, where you can have mental health counseling there. You can have... So those programs need to be discussed. How, what are the things that the people in the community actually want? And then once we find out what is actually wanted, then proceed to build a facility that will accommodate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. I would suggest that you look up the agenda online, I mean, not the agenda. If you pull up the agenda online, it'll be more than just the sheet you pick up in the back of the room, and it will explain in detail, or far more detail, what each of the items are, and I think it'd be more explanatory, but we're all happy to speak through stuff too because it is government speak. I mean, you look at any agenda in any government, and the abbreviated descriptions that you see on the agenda are not layman's terms for most people. Appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items? Okay, seeing no one, we will declare public recognition on agenda items closed, and I just have a few comments. I want to share with you some events that are upcoming. On the 16th, which is tomorrow evening, is the Neighborhood Workshop. It's at Shalom Zone, but it's for Habitat for Humanity, and that happens from 4 until 7:00 PM, and that is specifically, I believe, I see Sierra sitting there, about a piece of property that has been purchased right off of Blahst Street, and they're wanting community feedback on that. So I would encourage you to attend if you're interested in that. On the 19th and 20th this weekend is the Stamp Show at the Civic Center. I mentioned last week that Jeff Henshaw's birthday is on the 21st, and Councilwoman Love's birthday is on the 23rd. This month, each month, during the legislative session of the year, the Gallatin Chamber hosts, and has for probably four decades, hosts a legislative meeting once a month, and this month, they kind of, they get a legislative update each month, but once a month, they focus on either the city, or the county, or the school system, and this month, it's on the city. So that's on the 25th. It happens at 7:30 at the Hampton Inn in Gallatin. On the 26th, I think I mentioned that was on the 25th. On the 26th is the Community Cleanup Day, really put together by the Sumner County Health Committee, but certainly the city of Gallatin has been very engaged and helpful in planning for that. That's going to be happening at locations throughout Sumner County and many locations in Gallatin. Also, I put this on here because I thought it might have interest to some of you. There is a Sumner County Caregiver Conference at Welch College on the 26th. That's from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM. That might be worth something, that might be something worth checking out if you consider yourself a caregiver or know someone who is. Also, on the 1st of April, and this is looking ahead a bit, the Ball State's Educated Woman Luncheon is happening in Hendersonville. That benefits their Scholarship Foundation. And on the 2nd of April is the VIP Special Friends Easter Egg Hunt happening at the Gallatin Miracle Park. So that's going to conclude my comments for this evening and move us now to the regular agenda. And the first item on the regular agenda this evening is second reading on ordinance 02201-4, and Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning 57.5 acres, let's see, parcels eight, nine, 11, and 11.02, from the A Agricultural Residential to R8 PRD Medium Density Residential, Planned Residential Development District with the preliminary master development plan for Station Camp Creek located north of Long Hollow Pike and east of Big Station Camp Creek Boulevard, authorizing the revision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Vice Mayor Fennell, opening the floor for any discussion. With none, this is second reading on ordinance 02201-4. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item two is second reading on ordinance 02203-10. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, mayor. This is ordinance appropriating unspent 2014 to 2016 bond funds for fire hall number five for intrusion remediation and the police gun range for appropriating $34,000 from local option sales tax for police gun range. I so move.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02203-10. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item three is second reading on the amended ordinance 02203-11. Councilwoman Love, and I believe there is another amendment coming, so...
But I'll start with this one.
Yes.
Thank you. This is an ordinance appropriating $160,000 from various parks and recreation lines for Thompson Park's ball field lighting. I so move.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Overton. Councilman Overton, you recognize?
Yes, mayor. I'd like to make a amendment to this after speaking with Mr. Brown and some others. And I'll read the ordinance. Ordinance appropriating $265,000 for various parks and recreation lines for Thompson Ball Field Lighting. It be ordained by the city of Gallatin, the sum of 265 is hereby appropriated from 1104470929 Thompson Park Renovations from the following parks and recreation accounts: $54,667 from Miracle Park, $15,240 from Civic Center Basketball Goals, $145,000 undesigned fund balance, $50,000 from 11044450-929 Golf Course Clubhouse Renovations.
Was that a motion to amend?
Yes, mayor. That's a motion to amend it.
I have a motion to amend it and to elaborate on what Councilman Overton said. What he's proposing is that we don't touch some of the other funds that had been proposed to be touched before. There were some other plans, and this was going to really, this was going to adversely affect Thompson Park, which probably wasn't fair to some of the needs over there, and so I can support it coming from the unassigned fund balance at this point, although I, you know, I don't like to do that at all at this point in the year, but we've got a different situation, and we'll do better with the budget next year. So I have motion on amendment from Councilman Overton. I interrupted that. I should have waited on second. I apologize.
Second.
I'm the amendment. Okay, second by Councilwoman Love. Motion is second. I've said my piece. Is there any further discussion on how this is amended?
I'm not sure I understand the unassigned fund balance.
That's our just general fund. That's...
That's money being poised into this fund, too. Okay.
Originally, if you'll recall, we were trying to use it from other parks lines where money had not been spent, and, you know, because that's what we typically do with departments when they have a budgetary need in the middle of the year that wasn't budgeted for. But, you know, at the end of the day, you don't want to take away from some of the plans that have been on the books for a while.
So this is much more than Thompson Park lighting originally was going to be. Is that not right? Wasn't that 190,000?
Mr. Brown, will you come up, please?
160, wasn't it? When we're doing 100 and...
Yeah, I don't understand the 160. Go ahead.
So what's changed on the total amount?
290 was the bid for the lights. 290,000. And what this does is, is it puts back the money at Thompson Park that we would go use for new skate park equipment and some improvements that need to be done over there. So we'd act in the, so we got to scrambling around and got some of it, but there was 145 that we didn't have. But you're also, you're also using money out of your golf course renovations and putting it back over for this, correct?
But that top number shouldn't be 265 because that's not all coming from parks and recreation, or you should add the term and general fund balance.
No, it has to be 265. That's what, that because...
But I'm saying that that line reads that that's all coming from parks and recreation, and it is not because 145 of it's coming from the general fund.
Yes, but the 265 has to be because the funds that you've got, the Miracle Park...
But what I'm saying, that it can say...
Someone needs to make a motion to amend if that's the intent of this body, because right now, the mayor is correct. It reads that the ordinance is appropriating funds strictly from parks and recs lines, and that is not accurate based on what is before, what was laid on the desk tonight.
I think you could strike the "from various parks and recreation lines for Thompson Park Ball Field Lighting." I think you could just say ordinance appropriating $265,000.
That's my amendment.
And then I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. That brings us back to the $265,000 being appropriated, and then it's articulated out appropriately from the Miracle Park, from the Civic Center Basketball Goals, from the Golf Course Clubhouse Renovations, and from the unassigned fund balance. And I trust that that math, I'm sure Ms. Nichols checked that math, so, equals $265,000. So we have the amendment, we have the second. Are there any questions? Does everyone understand where we are at this point? Any comments? All right, let's vote on the amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Amendment passes unanimously, taking us back to the original motion, which is going to be a second reading on amended, amended ordinance 02203-11. Any further discussion on it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Second reading passes unanimously. Item number four is first reading on ordinance 02203-12. Councilman Alexander, you're recognized.
Thank you, mayor. This is owner of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning 14.67 plus or minus acres from the R10 Medium Density Residential District to R8 PRD Medium Density Residential Planning Residential Development District with a plan, with a preliminary master development plan for the Holland property located west of Center Street and north of Demoss Street, authorizing revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinance, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Overton. Okay, I'm in the floor. Any discussion? All right, it's first reading on ordinance 02203-12. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. First reading passes unanimously. Item five is first reading on ordinance 02203-15. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amended preliminary master development plan for Lowe's and a preliminary master development plan for a double star hotel, four-story, 71,876-square-foot hotel on 3.76-acre lot located south of Nashville Pike and east of Brown's Lane, repealing conflicting ordinances and providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any discussion on this? Councilman Overton.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. McCord can probably answer this for me. Double Star Hotel, is that, is that a brand that's already here in the United States? What is that? I tried to Google it today.
Now, I looked it up. I've now forgotten what it is.
It's under the name brand Staybridge Hotels.
Okay, Staybridge, okay. That answered my question.
Also, we will have some photographs for you at the next council.
That's what I was going to ask for. Thank you very much.
Yeah, when I was looking up double star hotels online, I didn't get really favor of architecture, but then when I found the Staybridge part in the, I guess it was the ordinance from the planning commission, I was like, oh, that looks much better.
I was going to say, too, also, we had some concerns, too, that, you know, when, I think a long time ago, a year ago or so, that people, they, I don't know if it's this chain or not, wanted to put the hotel right next to the condos. Well, just for the public's sake, this is not going in that same lot, and the condos are still going next to the cottages, and this is going down in kind of like the whole...
It's to the right. If you're facing Lowe's, it's to the right.
We had a couple emails on that today that, you know, people were asking about that, so just want to pass that along.
That's what I was going to say, too.
Mr. McCord, will those photos include the backside of that and facing Brown Lane, Brown's Lane?
There will, but the hotel will be, as Commissioner Hayes said, it will be down at the level of Lowe's building, so Brown's Lane is about 20 feet up higher. So you're, all you're going to see are the top two floors roughly from Brown's Lane, so you'll have a deck of windows across that area that will face Brown's Lane.
I guess my question better, we're going to see the front and the back of it.
Front door will face the new tool rental addition that they added to Lowe's back about a year ago, so that'll be the front door that you'd walk in. There'll be a service drive around the backside of the building, so you could drive a fire truck or any other service vehicle around the backside of the building between the, what's, I'll call it a wall, a rock wall, and where the hotel will be.
And the front door is going to face the Lowe's parking lot? Huh.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
What about the construction? What is, what is it? What is this? What is it? Is it brick or...
The materials would be EFS materials and brick and stone, and so those we're going to provide to you next week at the committee meeting.
Okay.
So you'll have color renderings, and then we will have photographs that we've obtained off of the Google Street images from other Staybridge Hotels in Middle Tennessee and Southern Kentucky.
Okay, good.
Make sure, and I think what Steve was getting at, I could be wrong, but make sure they have a picture of the front and the back. Yeah, there, those are included in the agenda package.
Retainer wall going up in front of the rock. I said it a long time ago because I've seen kids around there. I mean, you could just, you could jump off that cliff and kill yourself.
Yeah, they will have a fence that'll be built up on top so that that hopefully won't happen, and the engineering department did mention the concerns about the possibility of that wall crumbling at his limestone, so they'll have to reinforce that, and that will be addressed at the final master plan and construction phase.
Any further discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 02203-15. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. First reading passes unanimously. Item six is first reading on ordinance 02203-17. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, mayor. This is owner appropriating ARPA American Recovery Plan Act funds in the amount of $2 million for Clearview Park improvement, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02203-17. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. First reading passes unanimously. Item seven is resolution R2203-34. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Thank you, mayor. This is supplemental resolution number six, a resolution supplemental to the master resolution pertaining to water and sewer obligations, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $5,250,000 in aggregate principal amount of water and sewer system revenue refunded bonds, series 2022 of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds and establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom. Motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion? Any questions? This is resolution R2203-34. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item eight is resolution R2203-27. Councilwoman George. And Ms. George, I might, for, for Mr. Boone and others to benefit, kind of, you might, you might want to go through the resolution a wee bit just so they understand what it is when we're accepting improvements, or I'll do it.
Okay.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. This is a resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, Elk Acres, Section 3B. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman Overton. Just a little bit from the actual resolution that will help understand when we're accepting improvements, what that means. The city of Gallatin Engineering Division is hereby certifying that the public drainage infrastructure, the rights of way, public easements in Elk Acres, Section 3B, have been satisfactorily completed and have been installed in accordance with the approved plans and specifications, and that there has been full compliance with the city of Gallatin subdivision regulations, also that the public utility improvements in the development have been satisfactorily completed, that have been installed in accordance with the approved plans and specifications, and that there's been full compliance. And so it's basically saying that, yes, we will take it from the developer building it to us being responsible for it, and we have those public improvement acceptance, public improvement acceptances all the time, so I hope that'll help in the future. So we have a motion, a second, no discussion. This is resolution R2203-27. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item nine is resolution R2203-28. Councilwoman George.
Thank you again. This is a resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, Elk Acres, Section 4.
By Councilwoman George.
I move.
Second by Councilman Alexander. Again, this is same, same acceptances, but a different section. Any discussion? This is resolution R2203-28. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item 10 is resolution R2203-29. Councilwoman George.
Thanks again. Resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, Elk Acres, Section 5. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion? This is resolution R2203-29. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item number 11 is resolution R2203-35. Councilman Fan.
Thank you, mayor. This is a resolution supporting the city of Gallatin's application for the 2022 Community Challenge Grant. I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander, and this is for... And this is, for the public's information, an application for a grant with AARP. Kind of run through those of us who have been working with the senior livability studies and efforts on the behalf of the City of Gallatin. There is no cost to the City of Gallatin. So with that, any questions, discussion? Resolution R2203-35. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda and brings us now to other business. One thing I would like to say, and I think this is just an informative piece, and it's one of those things that I always think about, but I never actually articulate it. And that is, and for the public's benefit, you will see different council members presenting different items. Those council members are typically presenting items that fall in their district that they represent. So it's not just arbitrarily divided out to whomever we feel like should be presenting it. It's generally something that happens in their district. In the instances of bonds, or grants, or the likes of that, we will often assign those to either of the at-large representatives. So just for your information, tidbit, that's all. Any other business from this council to come forward? None? All right. So we will move on now to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that you may speak if you have a concern that was not on this evening's agenda. You may come forward. We have five minutes. We ask that you introduce yourself and give us your address. Public recognition on non-agenda-related items is now open.
Pascal Jervens, 1335 Long Hollow Park. Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's going to be quick tonight. Just want to give a good shout out to Jeff back there, who's taking care of the city Facebook page and put today a really, really interesting article on the labor force and unemployment rate in Tennessee. And show that unemployment rate is 2.8 in the city was really, really good. So thanks, Jeff, for posting that. He was thinking I'll be the only one reading it. Hopefully, now more people are going to read it. But he's doing a fantastic job for us, so, for tonight. Thank you.
While our unemployment rate is very low, there are still plenty of jobs, and that only measures people who are looking for jobs. So if you'd like a job in Gallatin, they're available. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? Ms. Hibler.
I have a question. The Citizens Academy, I think it was held through the EDA. Is that something that's coming back since things are opening up and changing? Is that through the EDA, or what do I need?
Conversation with Rosemary recently, she's, I think you're trying to get that going again. Mr. Fenton is nodding. I don't know if we have any dates or not. Are you volunteering, Ms. Hibler?
So if people were interested, they would need to contact your office?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? Seeing no one, but I think hearing someone's phone, I assume it doesn't want to talk. We will declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed. Bringing us to, imagine, motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton.
Second.
Second by Councilman Alexander. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone, have a lovely evening. We're adjourned. Be safe, be kind, and thank you for being engaged with your local government.